Nineja, no dey carry last. My guest today is the newly elected council member for the city of Grand Prairie. A twenty-two-year-old Nigerian-born. He exudes grace, power, intelligence, and maturity like no other. In a time where Nigerian leadership is broken, he is proof that Nigerian youths at home and abroad possess power and excellence that is unmatched. Stay tuned as I introduce you to Councilmember Junior Ezonu, my idea of Nigerian excellence. Joining me now is the newly-elected council member of Grand Prairie City Council, Councilman Junior Ezonu. Hello, welcome, welcome. How are you?
I'm well, I'm well. It's great to be here. How you doing, Nia?
We're doing very well. I'm doing very well. My team is doing very well. It's such an honor to have you on. Can I just say, "You won"? Like, "You won"?
Me won. It's not just by my power. We did it all together, and by God's grace. I'm just happy to be here. Thank you.
I was so excited when I saw it. I was on Facebook. I saw the news come through on my newsfeed. I was like, "He did it. He did it. He did it." I was, I was literally jumping for joy. Has the, has the excitement been so huge and resounding amongst all of your supporters and friends?
Most definitely. Even amongst those that didn't support me, people are just very happy to see a fresh face in a different space and just bring in diversity and different perspectives to the city council. People are just excited for some change. And it's a great thing. And I'm just, I'm really excited just to get to work. And this first week on the council has been great so far.
That's amazing. So, you put in a lot of work. How do you feel about everything right now?
Right now, I feel great, right? So, the first couple of days after the election results were called, I took a couple of days to relax, to sleep, to rest, and then I got back to work. I've tried to, you know, get back on my feet and try to do whatever I could to serve the constituents that I now have. I now am an elected official. I have constituents that I have to serve on a day-to-day basis. So, I'm really excited. I'm really happy. I'm honored, honestly, because it's truly a privilege. It's not a right to be, to be given the opportunity to serve those that you live with, those that are your neighbors, your friends, your family. It's truly an honor that I can't even thank God enough for, and thank the people of Grand Prairie for giving me this opportunity. And I'm just trying to do my best to serve everyone to the best I can.
That's, that's very amazing. So, tell us, where were you when you heard the news? Were you sleeping? Were you just waiting? What were you doing at the moment?
So, when the early vote numbers came, I was packing up from, I was working at a polling place. So, I was packing up, and what my friend called me, he said, "Junior, you're winning by a hundred and seven votes in the early vote." I was like, "Jesus." I don't want to bring out my Nigerian accent, because it was coming, but uh...
Bring it, bring it, bring it. I love it, I love it.
I started, I kid you not, I started jumping for joy because my, I ran the numbers. I looked at the difference demographics of the voters and just tried to estimate. And I said that most likely, the early vote count would be either I'm up by fifty to seventy votes, the incumbent that I ran against is up by fifty to seventy, or we're practically tied. And I was pretty close. I was up by a hundred and seven votes, so pretty close next to my estimations. And I said that if I win the early vote, I have a great shot to win the election. And we waited for the next three to four hours, and the election was finally called around eleven PM that night, eleven PM Central Time. And I was at home. I was sitting, just waiting for the votes to keep coming in, and they finally came in. I got the email. I got a call, and I was the councilman-elect, so we thanked God.
So, who did you call first when you heard the news?
The thing is, who was I calling for? I was with my family. People were calling me.
I love it. I'm loving this.
I had different mayors, different cities were calling me, different political strategists were calling me. I said, "Let's wait till the final numbers come in." I said, "Let's wait." They said, "Junior, it's over."
It's over. You won this.
Yeah. I said, "Let the final numbers come," and I was with my family. We were just waiting. We were just waiting. And glory be to God, we pulled it off. I just thank God.
I love that. Glory be to God. I love it. You know, I didn't even know how Nigerian you are when you said, "Jesus", but we're gonna come back to that, because I love it. I love it. You know, so what I saw from your campaign and just following you is that you ran a very, very clean campaign. It was also very modern. You utilized social media. You were always posting videos, giving updates, mobilizing people to vote. You mobilized a lot of young people as well. And just to go back to the fact that you ran that very clean campaign, you even always said, in your words, you know, you didn't talk dirty about anyone. You made sure everything did worse clean. You didn't put anything negative about anyone, your opponent. Why was that so important to you? Why was your, your campaign built on that foundation?
Because I truly believe that whenever you're running for any office or any election, you have to remember why you're running. You're not running to disparage anyone's character or to destroy someone's name or their reputation. Rather, you're running on your values, on what you believe and what you want to bring to your city and bring to the table. That's why I said, "I'm not going to attack the opponent, my opponent. I'm not going to attack anybody in this race, because that's not my goal. My goal is not to disparage your character or destroy your name. Rather, I want us to come all together as a community and do whatever is right for our town and for our city." And I said, "If I lose while running a clean race, while running a race on my values, running a race on what I want to bring to the table, I'll sleep very good at that, at night, knowing that I did what was right. I didn't try to destroy somebody." Because I feel like that's a, that's a very big problem with politics. We, people try to play very dirty, hoping to destroy someone's credibility and their character, end up destroying their own in that midst of doing that. So, that's why I was like, I stay away from all that dirty politics, especially on a local level. We're just trying to find good solutions for the entire community, and we've got to try to be as positive as we can be. People like positivity. I always tell, I always tell anyone that's getting into politics, people want to vote for something, not vote against something. They want to vote for someone, not vote against someone. And if we can keep it like that, I think we'll have brighter days ahead.
Do you think you can keep and sustain this idea of running a clean campaign moving forward? Or just a clean administration overall? Do you think you can keep that? Because it's very hard to keep in, in politics.
Most definitely. I think a big thing for me is just, like I said before, remembering why I got into this race. Remember why I wanted to pursue a political career. Remember, what is my "why", number one, right? And, I mean, I look at this campaign as a good evidence of whenever you run a clean campaign, you run a good campaign and run one on your values and your merits, people will pay attention. And I had a lot of people come up to me saying that they initially voted for the incumbent in the first election, but in the runoff, they're going to vote for me because they saw the dirty negative attacks that were racist to an extent. And that taught me right there, negativity may work sometimes, but in the long term, it hurts you more than it helps you. And I'm living proof of that. So, I know in the future, even if I'm having a tough race, I'd rather run it clean. If I lose running clean, I can sleep well at night.
That's very, very wise, and I love that you're saying. I think this is gonna inspire a lot of people. So, what I love so much about your campaign is a community that supported you. This community cut across race, cut across ethnicity. What did that feel like for you? Is that what you, were you targeting that specifically?
Most definitely. Grand Prairie is, is a microcosm of the entire United States of America. It's a very diverse town, very, very diverse town. And I wanted my coalition to resemble that. I wanted my coalition to look like the people that live in Grand Prairie. I didn't want to just run to one specific demographic, race, color, ethnicity. I wanted to run to everybody. I wanted to speak to as many residents throughout the city, no matter if they're black, white, Asian, Hispanic, Jewish, Christian, Hindu, Muslim. I don't care, because at the end of the day, we all want similar things. We all want safe neighborhoods. We want good schools. We want good jobs to put food on the table for our families. And I think if you can speak in that language of trying to help everyone and help the working-class, middle-class residents that need it the most, people, people can relate to that message. And regardless of they're black, white, Mexican, Hispanic, Asian, it doesn't matter. People all want similar things.
Absolutely. You know what I really love? So, you were endorsed by the Texas Working Families Party. You were endorsed by Grand Prairie School Board Trustee David Espinosa. You were endorsed by a lot of people. What did that feel like when you were just receiving all this endorsement and support?
It was a great feeling. It showed me that I was doing the right thing. Because my endorsements cut across, like you said, my support cut across many different ethnic backgrounds.
Exactly.
My endorsements reflected the same exact thing. I had endorsements from the Tahano Democrats, which is a Hispanic Democratic organization, had endorsement by NAIPAC, Nigerian Association Political Action Committee.
Good call-out.
I had, you know, we're all over the place, because we're resembling what the community looks like. We're not just trying to run to one specific demographic. And it made me happy, because it showed me that the fruits of my labor, you know, I'm getting the fruits of my labor. I'm working to reach everyone, and I'm picking up support from every different pocket of the town and every different pocket of diversity.
So, Councilman Junior, you are twenty-three years old.
Twenty-two, actually.
Twenty-two. Twenty-two years old. You just graduated college with a degree in political science. Do people get shocked by your age?
Yes, they, they get surprised, but at the same time, they appreciate that youthfulness, because they know that that youthfulness also resembles energy and willingness to get your feet dirty, get your hands dirty, and get to work. So, some people are like, "Yeah, aren't you a little bit too young?" But then I always remind them, I think we all can bring something to the table. We all have a calling to serve in some form or fashion. God puts us on this planet for, for a reason. I truly believe that, and to serve our community. I said to them that I think that this is my path to serving our community and making this world a better place. And when you speak like that, people are like, "Wait, this young guy, he may be a bit young, but I think he's on to something."
You know what? You are such an inspiration, because I feel like a lot of twenty-two-year-olds are still trying to find themselves. You know, but look at you here, jumping into the political arena. Aren't you scared that your age might be a disadvantage for you, or do you think that's actually a positive thing for you?
I think it's more good than bad. Obviously, there are some disadvantages that come with being a bit young. But at the same time, there's a lot of advantages, because I can reach a different demographic that has never been tapped before. I'm able to connect with people on a different level, and I bring a different perspective to the council and to the city as a whole. I speak about things that a lot of people just don't think about, because they, they're not in that age demographic. They're not speaking to the same people I speak to. I speak to young people. I speak to middle-aged people. I speak to senior citizens. I speak to everyone. But when you're at a certain age demographic, you might not be reaching out to the young as, as much as you would, because, you know, as they say, young people don't vote like that. So, we often neglect and forget about them, because prior history shows that they don't vote. But if you look at this election, we have some of the highest youth turnout ever. Those under the age of five. And that's because they have somebody to look up to, somebody that actually knocked on their doors as well, called them on the phone, reached them on social media, said, "Get out, get out and vote."
So, in that regard, I see the positive. But the reason why I'm asking is because I've held a leadership position, where I was the youngest in my position, and I had older people looking up to me and working with me. And what I suffered greatly in that position was I was heavily undermined by the older people and people in other positions. So, that is what I worry for you. Do you think, do you worry about that? That people in political offices, your co-council members, people in higher offices will look at you in that way as young and inexperienced?
Oh, yeah. A lot of people already look at me as young and inexperienced, and they're not wrong. I don't have the same amount of experience as they do. They've been on this planet longer than me. But one thing that I do have is the willingness to listen and to learn, and to receive that guidance from those that I do see as mentors. So, I do have mentors that are older than me, and I do listen to their advice and their guidance. At the end of the day, I'll make my own decisions. But I don't believe I have such an issue with being undermined on the council, because I'm just gonna make sure that my nose is everywhere. My ears are always open, and I'm, I'm listening. I think that if you listen more than you speak, you give yourself a good chance to avoid some of those roadblocks that will, that will be put in front of you because of your youthfulness and your age. I think that, especially us that are young, we have to be willing to listen to those that are older and those that we can trust. You have to figure out who can you trust and who can't you trust. And in those that you can trust, you have to be willing to listen to their advice, because they do know a little bit more than us. But we're gonna catch up eventually.
Listen, how did you become so wise at a young age? I need to meet your mother, okay? Because she needs to share whatever she did on you and how she raised you, because you are just so inspirational and wise at such a young age. It's, it's literally remarkable. You know, so I have to commend her for it, and your dad, of course.
Oh, yeah, for sure. It's by God's grace. I'm telling you, it's, it's not something that one person can just be born and just happen. I mean, God blesses us with a lot of different talents and gifts. And I think that God just gave me a couple here and there that I'm trying to use to better my community and better the lives of others.
Beautiful. So, let's tell me your story. What inspired you to want to run for office?
You want the long story or the short story?
You know what? We can come for part two next time, but let's get the short story. Let's go. Whatever story you're inspired to give.
Don't ask a politician to speak, because they're not...
They'll go on forever. Oh, Lord.
Exactly. But, I mean, ever since I was a child, like I said before, I was born in Nigeria. I moved to America when I was two years old. And, I mean, those, those of us that are immigrants, right, we understand the gifts that we have in this country, the blessings that this country provides us that we don't have back home. And I've just always wondered, what are some ways that I can get back to my community? So, I've done volunteering. I've done things here and there. But, I mean, as someone that's always been involved in political, in politics and government, I was like, "Why don't I throw my hat into the ring and see what I can do for my community?" Grand Prairie hasn't had a black or African-American city council member since the early 1990s. And now we have two. We're just elected in this past election. And the importance of diversity is not just that you have someone that resembles your skin complexion or your color, but also somebody that has a different kind of perspective, comes from a different background than others. Someone that can relate to a group of people that often are forgotten. And that's why it's so important, and that's why I wanted to run. I wanted to run to give a voice to those that don't have one, while remembering those that do. We cannot forget those that do have a voice. We have to bring everyone to the table. Because if you don't, if you don't have a seat at the table, you're on the menu. So, that's why I wanted to run.
You know what? That is a huge takeaway. If you don't have a seat on the table, you're on the menu, okay? Period. Now, I sound like a millennial and Generation Z. I should not. I have too many Generation Z-ers around me. It's making me sound like...
Madam, you're a millennial. I see you. You're very young. Don't worry.
Let me, I digress. I digress. Let's go back. So, do you have any experience or like something that really triggered? Because you said, yes, you've seen this happening around Grand Prairie, but like, is there any like experience that made you just go, "You know what? This is it. I have to run. I'm seeing the educational infrastructure. I'm seeing what's happening with COVID-19", because you have these three main issues that your campaign was built on, right? Healthcare, education, infrastructure. So, was there any pivotal experience that just made you say, "You know what? This is it. I am gonna run, and I'm gonna make changes happen"?
I don't think any specific thing came out of anywhere and just told me I need to run now. But rather, it's when you observe things and inequities for some time and see how certain areas and certain demographics are neglected. For example, in Grand Prairie, I mean, as in many cities, we have a side of the town that looks better than the other. And I'm just talking about infrastructure right here. So, you have the lower-income minority, minority-majority areas of the town, especially on the north side, whether it's the Dalworth area, which is historically African-American, or you go to some parts that are on the north side that are Hispanic-dominated, and you'll see the infrastructure disparities. You'll see areas that don't look like those down south. And southern Grand Prairie, which is newer Grand Prairie, to be honest with you, people over here are upper-middle class, even some are close to being wealthy. And down here, we don't have issues with our roads and our infrastructure. We don't have potholes. If you have a pothole, it gets repaired the next day. But if you go up north, it's a, it's a very different area. And my issue with that is that those that live there that are lower income, that are working-class people, have a more difficult time if they mess up a tire in a pothole. It's hard for them to go and repair that or get a new tire, buy a new tire. That's cutting into their weekly or monthly budget. With someone that is in a more affluent area, they can afford paying two hundred, three hundred dollars for a couple more tires.
Exactly.
Those that live in a working-class area, that's, that's pitching them in the pocket really hard. I'm like, "We need to invest more into these areas." I know that they may not bring enough, bring as much revenue as those that live down south, but at the same time, we're all paying property taxes. We're all paying sales taxes. Let's just get a little bit of something back, you know, regardless of wherever you live. Equity is just so important. Everyone deserves just the bare minimum, at least. And you deserve to have decent roads, and that is just a big issue for me. And that's something that I speak to the council and the city manager on a regular basis about, what can we do to improve the infrastructure of those that live in these working-class areas?
Wow. You know what? It's obvious, because even I write these on so many people's posts and comments on your page. You're like, "You're really for the people. Like, you have the heart for this." It's not just you coming, because like I was calling you earlier before we started this interview, you're a superstar. No, you're not just coming out to make a name for yourself. You truly care about providing service, right? And giving back to the public. So, that's, that's very important. So, how long has this been in the making? And forgive me if you've already mentioned this. How long has this been? Were you in school as a freshman, thinking, "I'm gonna run for office", or as a sophomore? How long has this been, maybe even mentally, in the making before we're seeing it now coming out into fruition?
Ah, that's a great question. I, I knew I wanted to run for office back in high school. I didn't plan on running until much later, when I was probably close to age thirty. I didn't plan on, but um, I guess I could just say it's God that gave me this opportunity. I said, "Junior, there's nothing that can, there's no negative that can come from you pursuing this office and trying to serve your community." So, I took a leap of faith, and I'll tell you that running for office is definitely a leap of faith, because no matter what level you're running on, it is some hard work and some late nights and some early mornings, for sure. But it's been one of the greatest experiences ever, and now I'm being an elected representative of my town, my city.
That's huge.
Two hundred thousand people I now represent. It's quite a, it's quite an unbelievable experience. I mean, it's unbelievable, and I just thank God. But um, I won't lie to you. I did not plan on running until, what is it, December, January. I was like, "Okay, let me try to get back to my community now." So, it's by God's grace that I'm here, and I'm just grateful.
So, how do your classmates and fellow college mates perceive you now? So, were you coming to class while running and just talking to class, "Vote for me"? Like, what was that like?
See, the funny thing is the pandemic ruined...
That's true. That's true. That's true. That's true.
So, it made it kind of, it made it kind of more, it kind of helped, because my classes were online now, right?
Okay.
So, I didn't have to always go in-person to UTA and take classes and come home and go and knock on doors. I was at home doing my classes, then after, I'll go and knock on doors. So, that, that right there was a blessing in disguise, if we're being honest. So... But my classmates, people my age, they're just so inspired. That's what they always tell me. They say, "Junior, you're inspiration." And I read some people's comments on Instagram and Twitter, and they're like, "I remember having a class with Junior. He would dress so well to class. He was so well-spoken."
Okay. Look at you.
And it's funny, because at the time, when you're doing all this stuff, you're not thinking about it. But other people, people observe, and that's something that we always have to keep in mind. Somebody's always watching. No matter what you do, somebody's always watching. So, always try to keep your best foot forward and do as good, do the best that you can, because someone is always paying attention, and you could be inspiring the, the future by just doing the smallest things.
Listen, that's another big takeaway for everyone who's watching. Like Junior has just said, somebody is always watching. So, just keep doing, keep inspiring, keep being you, right? Authentically, you just never know who you're inspiring. This is so amazing. So, you talked a little bit about how campaign is not easy. Do you think the reality is different from what you perceived in your mind and theoretically? What was the huge shocker while running the campaign? You're like, Obama went through this. You know, everyone went through this. What was, what were the biggest challenges running a campaign? What was that like?
The first thing is raising money.
Yes.
Raising money is the...
That's never easy.
Yeah, because, you know, especially when you're running as a young person, because the majority of the people you're reaching out to are young people that barely have jobs or in college and don't have that much money. And you have to contact them and ask them to donate ten or fifteen dollars to your campaign. So, definitely raising money is the first roadblock, and it's, I won't lie to you, money is a big issue of politics, because if you don't have money, you're not going nowhere. And it's sad. It's really sad. But if you have a lot of money, you can be a horrible politician or a horrible public servant, but you can get elected, because you have the money to be able to put out ads, to put out mailers, to hire people to help you with it, to help you with that. So, that's why money is so important. Number two that I'll say is organization. In my campaign, I didn't have a campaign manager. I did everything by myself, other than I have some...
Really?
Yeah, I didn't have a campaign. I was my campaign manager. I was my field director. I did all of that. But it's great, because I learned a lot from it. I learned a lot. But it's so important to be organized and then have a team. So, even though I didn't have a campaign manager, in the runoff, I had a great deal of support. A lot of volunteers that supported me, helped me knock on doors, helped me call voters, helped me text voters. So, being organized, having a team, whether it's a team of five or a team of ten, I recommend it for anybody, because it's too heavy of a load to carry yourself. It needs the people to support you in it.
So, who showed you the way and the ropes, considering the fact that you had very little experience? I mean, if you're your own campaign manager and everything, like, who was there to direct you essentially?
So, I reached out to a couple of community leaders that had run for office or were, were holding a political office, and I would just ask them some questions, mostly regarding with campaign finance. How do I file this form? Because that's the other thing. You have to file campaign finance forms. You have to do public disclosures of how much money you have in your bank, how much money you have in stocks, and all that stuff. So, I would reach out to them for just advice on that. I would ask questions regarding, what's a good vendor to buy my yard signs through to some council members in different cities? And just ask questions like that. But when it comes to field, when it comes to just my own campaign, I just went with my gut. And I'll tell you, I love politics, so this stuff, I mean, for the most part, I understand a good deal of it. But whenever I did have questions, I did have some people to, I could ask, and they would give me some good advice.
You know what? I have to say, like you said, that's a huge advantage, you doing everything yourself, because of course, you got to learn. I have political friends who ran for office, especially council member positions, and who didn't win. And one thing they said was, they were not as involved, hands-on. You know, they had a campaign manager that did everything, and so they felt like that affected their possibility of learning so much and just connecting more with the people and with the work. So, I think, yeah, you're right. That's really a huge, a huge positive for you. So, you know, you talked earlier about how you ran a clean campaign, and to me, that really sticks out to me. You never spoke dirty about anyone, but some people spoke dirty about you. And I'm not even gonna give them that credit of mentioning the names here. I'm not even gonna give them that, that platform. But how did that make you feel? And you responded so elegantly, very sophisticatedly, literally. How did that make you feel?
Honestly, it just ignited my fire and encouraged me to keep working hard and keep knocking on doors. I only wanted to respond one time, because the thing about negative attacks is the goal of it is to throw you off balance and distract you. So, my best advice for anybody is, understand that this is politics. This is what comes with politics. There's a dirty game. It's truly a dirty game. So, you can't let it affect you. You have to be strong-minded and just know that this is what comes with the game, but don't allow the negative attack ads to discourage you and then throw you off your game. Keep knocking on them doors. Keep speaking to residents, voters, because the good thing about some of these attack ads and stuff is that people see through it. Not everybody's gonna see through it, but a good amount will see through it. And if you're doing your job, you're still talking to the people, and you're keeping them engaged, and you're showing them that you care, they're gonna come out for you, and they will support you. So, that's my, that's my best advice.
No, and that's, and the reason why I mentioned that is because we're talking about the challenges you went through during your campaign. And to me, that's a huge challenge, trying to deal with all the negative, the naysayers and the attacks coming your way. So, in terms of finance, and I think a lot of people struggle with this, you said that's huge, right? Running a campaign. How were you able to solve that issue? Like, what tools can you share with whoever is thinking about being in your position, running for office? Perhaps a council member, perhaps a mayor, whatever it is. What advice do you have to share with those people? Because that's a big, a big deal, a big thing in, in running a campaign.
Number one, for me, I would say, and this is what I was told whenever I first started running, reach out to all of your family. Anyone you consider family, your mother, your father, your siblings, your cousins, your nieces, whatever. Reach out to them. Ask them to donate ten dollars, twenty dollars, whatever they can donate to your campaign. From there, extend to your friend groups, to whoever you consider as a friend. And if they're a friend, they better donate at least ten dollars. And if they don't donate ten, they're not a friend. I don't know what kind of friend that is. But yeah, ask them to donate just a couple of dollars or whatnot to your campaign. And then from there, you can slowly branch out to professors or colleagues that you worked with. People want to support you, and good people will support good people. But I truly believe that. So, that's how you start to get the ball rolling. And then eventually, you may be supported by some organizations. I would say to be wary of receiving donations from organizations, because sometimes people will expect something in return. So, be very cautious, be very wary of who endorses you and donates to your campaign. There's nothing wrong with an endorsement, but my problem is sometimes people will give you some money, and then later on, they'll remind you that they donated to your campaign, and then you owe them a favor. So, I would say, be very wary and be very cautious of who donates to your campaign. But definitely, for anybody that's starting off, reach out to your family. Ask your family for money. Then ask your friends and neighbors and whatever, colleagues to donate to your campaign, and then spread out your thing like that.
And don't be shy about it, because a lot of people are too scared about asking. I know I'm scared about asking people for money, and I worked in nonprofit for so many years, and I still get nervous about asking people to donate. So, you know, don't be scared about it.
I'm glad you said that, because something about me is I hate asking people for money.
Exactly.
I hate it. But when it comes to politics, when it came to this campaign, I didn't care. I said, "I know why I'm doing this." I said, "You wanna support me, you better support me, man." I said, "I've never asked you for a dime. I've never asked anybody for money, but for this, this is different. This is not going to my pocket." This is how I'll be able to buy my... I said, "Another thing, you have to explain that. This is how I'm able to buy my yard signs, how I'm able to print out my flyers, how I'm able to buy this, this program. I need to call voters and do this and do that." So, you have to break it down for people, because people don't know. Unless you're in politics, you want to understand how expensive it is to conduct a campaign. So...
I love that. I love that. You have to break it down and be very specific, right? Just, "This is what I'm using this for. This is what..." And people will definitely gravitate towards this, your movement and your campaign, if you're very specific. You know? Yes. I think a lot of people like transparency, so they'll definitely gravitate towards it. You know, Junior, you have been such a pleasure, I can't even tell you enough. And we're not done, don't think I'm done, no, I'm just trying to, just let you know that I'm loving this interview one hundred percent. So what was the most beautiful thing about the campaign? We've talked about the challenges, of course. What was the most beautiful thing for you? Was it meeting the people, meeting little kids, holding your signs? What was so, what was so gratifying for you overall?
I think the best feeling is knowing that you made a difference. And I say this because Grand Prairie averages about four thousand voters turning out for municipal elections normally. No more than four thousand, no more than five thousand. The mayor sometimes will get six thousand people to come out and vote for him, but that's the mayor's race, right? And then the, in the general election on May first, eight thousand people came out to vote. In this same, the same race that, the race that I ran, right? Three years ago, last time when, when the, the incumbent was up for reelection, only thirty-six hundred people voted. But this time, eight thousand people came out.
That's huge.
We doubled that just by speaking to residents, getting them out to vote, exciting them. And then in the runoff, runoffs tend to have about twenty percent drop off in voter turnout for runoff. So if e- if eight thousand voted in um, in what you call it, in May, in a runoff, it should be about five, fifty-five, six thousand people should vote. Fifty-five hundred, six thousand people should vote. And seventy-six hundred people voted. Just four hundred less than what voted on May first, which showed us that we got people out there to the polls, we did something right and we excited a base of voters that have never voted in municipal elections. We got people excited about local governments. We got them excited about local government, city politics, which often get forgotten about, even though they have the most direct effect on your day to day life. And that right there gave me the most happiness because at the end of the day, I know that I made a difference in the lives of so many. I engaged young people, people of color, people that have never voted in a local election. Nigerian people, African people that don't vote in these elections. You know, our people, we, we vote for president, but we don't vote for anything else, so. You know how we are now.
Listen, I was gonna, I'm gonna come to that next, that's my next, but go ahead, go ahead, I'm listening.
Seriously, that, that right there is a blessing of itself and I'm just so happy and honored that I was a part of that. I was a part of this movement and part of this history.
You know what? I, I love that, part of this history. And when you, when you talk about all of these milestones and successes and just to reference what you said earlier, I really glory to God because this is just like blowing my mind beyond words. And so can you just tell my audience, the incumbent has been in office for how long again?
Twelve years.
Twelve years. And for the first time in twelve years, you're taking over.
Yeah.
I mean, that is just.
And, and what people don't know is that the incumbent was supposed to be the next mayor of Grand Prairie. This was like, it was like the heir apparent, this is what people always said, that he's the next mayor of Grand Prairie. And for us to challenge him and even take him to runoff was just a blessing of its, of its own. And then for us to win this race, I mean, God is great, that's all I can say, God is great.
Listen, I can just see this halo over your head right now, I don't know what it is, but you're just, you're just a star, you're just a blessing. It's just beautiful to just watch your journey and see you just open up like a beautiful flower. I know that's used to reference women, but seriously, for you too, just to see you come out and blossom is so, is so magical. So let's shift gears, let's talk about personal, right? Let's get to know you even more inside this campaign and, and this political career you're creating for yourself. Uh, so you're Nigerian-American.
Yes, ma'am.
So does that mean you were born in America? Tell us about that.
So I was born in Nigeria, I was born in Oncham, a number of states. Uh, my family's from Nobe, Edemili, Edemili South, local government. Uh, we moved to the States and uh, and I'm breaking it down for our people, our people know what I'm talking about now.
You know, I was about to say, Junior, you're taking me out of my professional zone, okay? Stop it, I'm supposed to be very professional. You're making me wanna like, don't like, yes, go ahead.
I have a question, wha- what part of Nigeria you from, what uh state are you from in Nigeria?
Imo.
Imo, what local government?
Idiata North.
What town?
It's called Akolu.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure you don't, so it's very close to Alu, you've heard of Alu, right? Exactly, so literally we're close to Alu, Akokwala, look at, Ibo Quenoo.
Hey. Quenoo, hey, Quenoo.
I don't think, I don't think your audience is ready, I don't think your, your constituents are ready for this, Junior.
It's funny, somebody said Ibo Quenoo at the swearing again, it was hilarious, hilarious, somebody said that. And, and I was like, where's one?
This is, oh my God, this is just so beautiful. I'm loving how Ibo you are, I'm loving how Nigerian you are, that's amazing. So you were born, what's up?
You have to have fun with your culture, man.
You have to, you have to embrace it, you have to shine the light of your culture. And I hate that many people don't do that across all races. It's like, you have to just represent, yes, you're in this Western world, but stand tall and say, this is who I am. I'm not gonna shake it off, this is who I am. So you were born in Nigeria, you moved here at two years old, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
And you've been in America, so you pretty much grew up here, went to elementary school, high school, of course, college, now you're graduated. Um, so do you have siblings or are you the only child?
So I have three siblings, two brothers and one sister. I'm the oldest in my family, uh, but yes, ma'am, I have three siblings.
They must really just look up to you.
Nah, man, I look up to them, they're wonderful, they're wonderful uh and so supportive. And I just thank God, I, I'm blessed with a great family, truly blessed with a great family.
Oh, and your parents must be so, cause I know Nigerian parents, hey, my son is the newest council member of eh, eh, hey, Grand Prairie. I'm sure that's what they're doing, right? I love it.
You already know, I don't have to tell you.
Your dad, uh-huh, Junior, Junior, Bianca, Bianca. We are so wrong for this.
You know who my son is, you know who my so- my son, I'm a natural counselor.
So what's how like cops stop them and they're like, he's like, eh, do you know who my son is? My son loves this city, you cannot give me a ticket.
If you give me a ticket, I'll, I'll report you, what is that? Tell me your badge.
And then your dad is on TMZ and like the shade room, watching this Nigerian father. Oh, we're thinking too far, but this is so exciting, I am just so. So how connected are you to the Nigerian community? I know you talked about being a part of or just going to events with uh you, you are you, Umu Bo Unite. How connected and did Nigerians come out to support you? Cause I know like you said, Nigerians will vote for presidential election. But anything else, local government, whatever it is, they fall short. So did you feel like you received a lot of support from Nigerians?
Yeah, so I mean, just to talk about my connection with the African community as a whole. In college, I was a, a executive member of our ASO African Student Organization. Um, served on that for about a year, so I'm very active when it comes to, you know, our people for sure. But yeah, I definitely, we definitely turned out the most Nigerian African voters in Grand Prairie history. Eh, eh, the numbers that came out to vote in this um nonpartisan municipal election was off the charts. And I'm grateful for that. Cause I mean, cause I mean, the main thing is you have to connect with people, you have to talk to people. And what I always tell people about politics is speaking the language that people are comfortable in. Speaking the way, like you know, connect with them, speak their language, you don't have to speak Ibo per se, but speak to, speak to the things that they understand and they can relate to. That's the most important thing when you get into politics. And I, what I did is I had my parents, I saw my parents, like, here's a, here's a name, this is a list of all the Nigerians, all the Africans of Grand Prairie, I want you to call them.
Did they do that?
That's why I did it, I had them knocking on doors, had them calling them for me because I said that you can relate to them much better than I can because you're, you guys are in the same age demographic. You are immigrants straight from Nigeria, straight from Africa. When you call them on the phone, they'll talk to you more because they hear the accent. So you gotta, you have to try to connect with people in ways that they can understand. And what makes them comfortable.
That's why, I love that you involved your parents. So from a Western point of view, would you say being a Nigerian-American, uh, a Nigerian-born, let's just go with that, being Nigerian-born was a disadvantage? Did you ever feel insecure about that or did you just like hell? Cause I know sometimes people pronouncing the name. So you know how many Nigerians go by Antonia, right? Antonia, that's right, that's my full name, but it was cut short to Nia because Americans are like, ah, we cannot do that, we're gonna call you Nia. So and, and, and I, and I took on that name because I loved it. If I didn't like, I'd be like, no, you know, kick that away. So sometimes I see us being too nervous to pronounce our names boldly. Even now, my last name, I say it's Amuzi, you know, I don't go Amuzi. So did you ever feel like that was a disadvantage, especially in terms of them pronouncing your last name?
No, I, I don't think so because um, I never look at my heritage as a disadvantage, rather it's a gift and it's an advantage to connect with a broader base of people. Um, I just tell them, to make it easier, I say, just call me Junior. But my full name is, if I, I mean, if I say my full name is Steve Chukwuemeke Ezondo Junior.
That's it?
Yeah, I, I, I just, you know, Junior, I say Ezondo to make it, you know, Ezondo, Ezondo. But it just Ezondo, just to make it easier for people. But funny story, now you talk about um our, our names. I had somebody comment on uh my Facebook somewhere and they were like, I told you, don't vote for that, that Nigerian immigrant, I can't pronounce his name. And even though that was, that was a raunchy comment, it was hilarious to me, saying, I can't pronounce his name.
Oh my God, how did you respond to that? How did you combat that?
I didn't respond to that, I just, I just left it alone because they weren't talking to me, they were talking to somebody else.
To somebody else?
They said, don't vote for that Nigerian immigrant, I can't pronounce his name. I just found, found it funny, I just found it really funny. I'm like, you can't pronounce Junior, you can't pronounce, like, I don't.
I know, but you can pronounce, what was that actress? I forget her name and forgive me, my audience, for forgetting her name. But she said, if you can pronounce like some Jewish name, right? Kavinsky or whatever, you should be able to pronounce other immigrants' name, it should not be a problem. You know, you should try.
Most definitely, yeah.
Junior, uh, you know, we're gonna slowly wrap up, we're running out of time, maybe five more minutes with you because this has been just a pleasure. Um, what would you like, not even your constituent, but just people across the globe to know about Nigerians? Because of course, being a Nigerian right now is positive in some sense because we're very successful and just are go-getters. But there's still always that negative, you know, um connotation to our name. The fact that people say Nigerians are scammers or whatever. But being in this position, and I know you're not speaking for only Nigerians, trust me, I'm not in net, I completely understand. But what would you like people at large, globally, to know about Nigerians?
I think as a whole, and people notice already, Nigerians are just like any other group, any other demographic. We have our good people and we have our bad people. Everybody has good and has bad. But something that's, something that's special about Nigerians is that we're gonna work our butts off, we're always gonna work hard in whatever we do. And we're gonna do, do the best to provide the best level of service that we can. Whether it's in medicine, we're doctors, pharmacists, nurses, or we're looking at law, as lawyers. Or just engineer, everything, Nigerians are gonna work very hard to do what's best we can to, I mean, earn your respect and earn our profits. So that, that's something about Nigerians, we're always gonna work very hard. And of course, we're gonna have a, a couple of bad apples here and there. But with every group, there's a couple of bad apples here and there. And we can't let those few bad apples distort the entire picture.
Junior, I mean, this again has been an absolute pleasure. I'm gonna add you to my inner circle because you be dropping some gems, okay? You're just out here jumping the nuggets. And I'm like, he needs to be in my inner circle because I only, you know, allow wise people in my inner circle, you know how we do. Uh, but I, it's just, it's been an absolute pleasure. What kind of legacy do you want to leave? And this is gonna be one of my final questions. Uh, I mean, just, you're starting out right now, this is your first political office. I think let me go with this question. Do you wanna keep running for more positions? You wanna go higher? And then what kind of legacy do you wanna leave on? What do you wanna be known for?
Uh, which is a great question. My goal is to serve the people of Grand Prairie, to do what's best for my town. And serve, provide, provide the best service that I can and represent our people well and have people be proud of our city, be proud of our town and be proud to be a resident of Grand Prairie. And if God blesses me ten years from now, twenty years from now, and I can seek a higher office in the future, wonderful. But my priority right now is to do what I can here where I am right now and do my best and put my best foot forward. And for my legacy, I want my legacy to just be very simple. Junior did his best to help as many people as he could. That's number one. I did whatever I could to help everyone that I can. And if I, if that can be my legacy, I'll be happy wherever I am, so that's what I like to do, thank you.
Junior, thank you so much for coming on. This again has been an absolute pleasure. My assistant is here, she's been laughing the whole time. Do you wanna just say something so we can hear your voice?
Hi.
Just hi, did you? She just loved it. She was laughing the whole time.
So I was vibing with your personality.
Look at that, look at that. And even like literally my cinematographer, quote unquote, he's, everyone is just smiling, we just love you so much, Junior. Thanks for shining your light, because you do have a light and you're shining that. Um, and thanks for putting the, your constituents at the forefront, for putting the city of Grand Prairie, even though I'm not, I don't live there, I'm in Houston. But I can just see that passion and that desire to serve. You were born to serve the people for public office, so I'm so thankful, I'm gonna be watching your journey. Now that we have officially connected on camera, I'm gonna be supporting. I know prior to this, we're not super connected, but now that I know, I'm gonna support in any way I can. How can people support you? What would you, you know, do you want them to just send you messages? Like what else can we do? You've already won the election. Is there any other way we can support you and support your constituents?
Well, I mean, you can support a few ways. We can connect on social media. I am planning on creating prob- probably like a mentorship program in the future to mentor young adults and just young children, you know, as a whole. Move them towards considering public service in the future. But also, um, just, yeah, I mean, really just stay connected with me, honestly. I don't really need donations anymore now that I'm in office. Uh, I don't mind donations to prepare me for the next campaign, which is a few years from now. But primarily, just connect with me on social media, let's have, let's talk, let's chat, let's figure out ways to approve all of our communities, no matter where you are. So that's all I need at the moment.
Thank you so much. And you're very responsive on social media, I've noticed you're very responsive. So thank you again, Junior. And everyone, thank you so much for watching today's conversations with Nia. I had so much fun talking to council member Junior Ezono.